Met in council chambers on Thursday, May 15th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for the purposes of discussing the matters below. Notice this meeting was posted on April 29th, 2025 at 10:52 AM. All members of the committees are present except for Councillor Varela. From the Committee of the Whole, we have Councillors Harvey, Council President Prozynski, Councillor Davis, and Councillor Stott. And from the city, we have James Wheelock, Vula, and Amanda Jankola, and David Greenbaum. The matters discussed today will be zoning ordinance to adopt first passage, already adopted for first passage for ADUs, and then the ordinance to amend ordinance relative to abandoned foreclosed properties. So, does the committee have a preference where we want to start with this? If we want to start with abandoned foreclosed properties, address those or move to ADUs first. Councillor Cohen?
I don't have a preference, but since we have, I think, more people from the city for abandoned properties, should we do that?
All right, James and Vula, if we want to talk through some of the concerns, so the questions raised by the council last time, and any potential red lines.
Good evening, everyone. James Wheelock, I'm the Assistant City Solicitor. So, based on the feedback from our previous meeting, I added a definition of vacant for vacant properties, and this draft also changes the registration requirement so that vacant properties that have been vacant have to register and not properties that are necessarily going through the foreclosure process. So, this includes properties that are vacant as a result of the foreclosure process, but also includes those properties that are vacant for some other reason. Previously, there was a trigger for properties that began the foreclosure process, and those properties could still have residents in them at the time. And those aren't really the target of this ordinance. The target of this ordinance is those properties that aren't being maintained, that are a nuisance and a blight to the neighborhood, either because of structural deficiencies, or because it allows for squatters, it allows for a lot of problematic happenings at these properties. And we do have those situations come up, and we do have properties that have been vacant for years and years, that we don't really have an adequate means to address those. So, this ordinance is targeted at those. I also want to flag that, so when the redlining that was passed out earlier, it also includes in the definition of abandoned properties, properties that have broken windows and doors, or doors that open without a functioning lock, as a condition for more than 45 days. Those properties would also be included in the definition of abandoned, whether it's commercial or residential. And the idea there is to grab properties where the maintenance issues of that property make them a blight on the community, and we can address that through this ordinance as well.
Sorry, James. Sorry, James, continue.
No worries. So, there were, the previous version, and those changes are included, include an owner of a vacant property being required to register the property as abandoned or vacant, and requires that a contact person for that property, their contact information be posted on the property, so that the city's inspectors, when they go by, can contact that property manager or a local agent, whatever you want to call them, to address any major concern within 24 hours of a phone call, or within the prescribed time limit if they're receiving something in writing as required by law. And that contact information is required to be updated. One of the problems that we're facing with abandoned properties is we don't know who the contact person is, who owns it. And a lot of them are foreclosed properties that could be owned by this bank or that bank, they get transferred, not always, the paperwork isn't always updated. So, it requires the updating of that contact information, and for issues at the property be addressed in a reasonable timeframe. And if they're not updated, then a fine can be issued. So, those are the major features of this proposed ordinance.
Thank you. So, the main, I guess, the questions that came out of the previous meeting, just as a, to refresh everyone's memory, is the council wanted to break down what the graduated fees would cover, the list of abandoned foreclosed properties, and data relative to violations in police visits, which I think is provided to all of us here in front of you, counter explanation as to how the city-owned properties might fit into this ordinance, with Five Broad Street as an example, clear definition of abandoned property, which we just covered. And then, of note, there was some, just some general concern from several members about unintended consequences that might be experienced by those living in those foreclosed properties.
So, I think that last one was covered by the definition change. This would not, the city's not going to require itself to register properties that it currently holds as abandoned. I don't know what use that would be for our code enforcement officers. But as far as the breakdown of what these properties are actually costing us, because we do spend a lot of time and try to mobilize resources to address this problem, Vula can address some of that. One thing I want to flag is that because we're only charging currently $300 a year for this, and we don't have hundreds of these properties, it's a small amount. But each property being abandoned is a huge problem. That's part of the reason why we're looking to charge more for it. We don't have the software resources to manage and keep and track reports, and to help us manage and know everything, all of the details of these properties, and the ability to share that information. Let's say 911 is called to an address, the police should know, as they're going to that address, that it's registered as abandoned. If it is, then they know that the people that are there have a different status than someone who is lawfully there. So, we should have that ability, that technology exists, and with that, if you want to address the costs that are incurred.
Yep. So, I had submitted a sheet there that shows that if we administratively, just to take a registration and to be reviewed by the clerk, it takes time. And then for us to go out, we do required inspections. I submitted three properties that we've been to recently.
Sorry, Vula, is this, this is this page right here that we're talking about?
Yes, abandoned foreclosed cost analysis, yep. So, it shows the cost analysis benefits. If, we could spend from five to 40 hours on each property a year, depending on how many calls we get, how much compliance we get with who we, you know, whoever owns the property, the bank, or, you know, it depends. And then usually it's like the health department, police department, fire, we all go to the, to these properties. It could be four times, it could be five times a year, it depends on how many required inspections and what compliance we get from that. Recently, 22 Prescott, that's one of the properties I put out there. We had the AG out there, we had an assistant solicitor, so that took time. We were there for a couple of hours. So, we're spending a lot of time and resources, and that's, I'm just putting an average of how much time and how much money it costs the city for us to go out there. So, and I put the benefits. And ideally, we don't have a software to track it, and I know you had asked for a lot of these, for me to get your information. I just tracked three of them that I went through emails and reports and things that I could get. We don't have a software that tracks our violations, or every time we get called to go to something, that we can track it. So, ideally, I'm trying to work on a software that we can coordinate with all the departments, so we can pull this information up that's requested, and we can know what is going on in every property.
Any questions on the foreclo, on the cost analysis? All right. Thank you, Vula, on that. James, you mentioned briefly about the city-owned properties. Just want to give councillors a question, ask a question about that if they have any questions or concerns. No? Okay. If there's no questions or concerns on the city properties, any other general questions or comments from the council? Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. I just have one question for now. Under the appeal, it says the hearing officer, is that the building commissioner?
No.
No. So, under Chapter 40U, we have a municipal hearing officer who, I don't hear my voice as loudly as I did before, so I want to make sure I'm on the microphone. We have a municipal hearing officer who hears ticket appeals, and it would be that same person who can hear appeals of how the property is classified. So, every year, they're going to get an invoice that shows how long this property's been vacant and what the registration fee is, and they can appeal that. They can, they can appeal the duration of how long it's been vacant, and whether or not abandonment applies essentially, and whether or not they are the responsible party, right? Because if, if we believe that a property is owned by this person, but it was, the interest of it was transferred to someone else at the time of registration, they should be able to get out of paying that fee, and the responsible party should be, should be held. So, it would be the municipal hearing officer that we have to hear 40U ticket appeals.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Mursul?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question about, how does this information get relayed to the police department? Like, what, how is this done?
Sure.
What's the connection there?
So, I've worked in other municipalities previously, and there is software available where the building department, other departments that gather information about properties can be shared with other departments. And that includes with police officers responding to a property, they have a computer in their, in their car, they can pull up the address, and that information will be available to them, whatever is in the database on it. And if, if we could find a way to, if there's a software solution that's available for these different, for this information sharing, I think that's a huge resource for them.
Okay. And then I had sent you a question earl, oh, sorry.
So, right now, we do monthly meetings, it's called Problem Properties. So, if we have a property that we have a problem with, we will bring it to the attention of the other departments, and we talk about the property. And police is there, health, fire, James is there, who else is there? Everyone from each department. So, then we talk about it, do a plan, and then we meet next month and see what needs to be done. That's when we coordinate a required inspection, then we come back with the progress, did we get anything, any compliance? So, that's how we're communicating right now. The software would be an additional great asset to us. But right now, we're doing Problem Property meetings every month.
Okay. And then, just to follow up, I had asked you earlier through email about abandoned schools, and this doesn't cover that. And so...
So, abandoned schools would be covered if the windows are broken or the doors are broken. But I don't believe that they would be covered unless they're classified as a residential or commercial property. I'm not familiar with the properties that you flagged. I don't know how they're classified.
I mean, the one that I had sent you was St. Anne's School, but we had two schools. We had the school on Federal Street that was abandoned for a long time. We had the one near Immaculate Conception, right, St. Mary's, that was abandoned for a long time before it was purchased. Had to be, had to be a burden on the city. And so, I'm not sure why they're, they're like, separate from this.
I think that in, in writing this, the focus was on properties, and my thinking was the two major uses that were problematic were those two uses that I talked about. And we found an exception, it sounds like. We could add, a definite part of the definition could be, is there something problematic about those particular properties that we could flag and add? If it's not about the structure being broken and people able to congregate inside, I'm curious to know what the, what the cost, what the burden on the city would be that we could maybe add to the definition of abandoned property.
Well, if you're, if you're saying that it would be caught under the broken windows rule, I'm okay with that right now. But I think that it is, it's just an omission, and I'm not sure why, why it is. That's all.
So, on any properties that are not maintained, whether they're abandoned or not, so there is something in our building code that in Chapter 1, they do have to maintain it, so we can go after them in that sense. I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with the properties as much as why nothing was done, but that's what usually we start with a violation letter, and then we continue with violation tickets to the property owners, if it's not a municipal property, obviously.
Actually, in looking at this definition, it says abandoned means any property, residential and commercial. That doesn't mean only residential and commercial. It says any property, residential and commercial, it's an inclusive list. I don't think it's excluding other non-residential or non-commercial that is vacant or unoccupied for more than 45 days, blah, blah, blah. You go down to the definition of vacant. Vacant means any real property that is not legally occupied and is not the subject of an active building permit, period. So, I think that that, school building vacant for 45 days or more, and the convent vacant for 45 days or more would be covered by this.
Yeah, just to follow up. I mean, the convent has a big sign on it that it's a, I don't remember the term. You shouldn't go in it, right?
Condemned.
It's condemned. Thank you. It's condemned. I mean, this is, this is the same thing. I just want to make sure that we're not, that this isn't slipping through because it's a different use. It's not residential or commercial right now. That's all. It still seems like it's a burden on the city. If there's a fire in there, I don't know, what do you do with a, with a, with a condemned building? I mean, I think that's a problem. But anyways.
Is there a reason we couldn't just remove residential or commercial and just say any property? Is there a reason why that, those two words are in there?
The, the purpose was to emphasize that it, that it does apply to both residential and commercial. So, if a commercial property is vacant, it can be just as much of a problem. It kind of puts everyone on notice that this isn't just about a vacant house. This is also about vacant businesses as well.
Yeah, I'm just curious if, I'm not, I'll defer to you on this, but I just don't know if someone could challenge this and say that I'm not residential or commercial. I understand your logic that you walked us through, but is there a reason why we can't just say any property, or just say residential, commercial, et cetera, including but not limited to?
I would technically classify a building or a property, the commercial or residential. So, a school could be commercial because it's not residential. That's my interpretation from building code when we're interpreting it. It's either commercial or residential.
I mean, I'll defer to James on all that, but just, just curious why that was in there specifically. I understand, so I guess it was to, to let everyone know that it's not, this is not just residential properties. But if the concern is that schools could slip through, is there language, a language change that we could make to, to catch that? Or is it not an issue? I guess that's the...
I think it's, I think it's not an issue. I, yeah, I think it's not an issue. I think, I think it's inclusive of both.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Prozynski?
Thank you, Chair Hapworth, out of the committee. Vula, the Problem Properties Task Force was something that I was a part of in another life, and I believe that you were there when it was, when I was still on the board. It addressed all properties in Salem that had all problems, including abandoned properties, but also properties that frequented either by the health department or frequented by the police or the fire. And this roundtable meeting with all the department heads would, everybody would basically strategize as how are we going to address the specific problem for this specific property. And there was a list, it was usually two or three pages long, stating the address of the property, anything that we knew about the owner, who was responsible, and what the issue was. And we'd go down the list on these meetings to see where everything stood. Does it still work in that fashion?
Yes.
So, one of the outlets for abandoned properties was the fact that the city could take over the property and then resell it, which it did, on a, on a residence that was off of, off of Bridge Street, where we had people illegally staying there, families that didn't belong there. But the owner had passed, moved to California, passed away, and the city was, finally got to take ownership of the building.
Like a receivership.
Right, and sell the property. So, I'm all about getting the fines increased, but it seems that it gets caught up in a lot of red tape, and the property stays a blight for quite a while before the receivership is completed. Is there a way to kind of fast-track that, so that, once the fines are issued, and if they're ignored, or people are ignoring, just to get this, this property to someone else who's going to take care of it?
I'm going to have James answer, but I feel that we start with our violation letters, tickets, and then court. And James has been very helpful with us to get a lot of compliance. I had an issue with a property that went from a five family illegally to a seven family in an eighth, in the basement. We've been in ongoing battle, and started my violations again, tickets in court, and now they're going back to the five family. So, I think that's the process, but James can answer a little bit more about the receivership.
James, do we have any of those buildings in, in that process right now?
We do have several properties in receivership right now. And so, what this is, is another tool in our toolbox to address vacant properties. We want to gather as much information as we has, as we can get. And that will help us down the line with applying for receivership. If we know who the property owner is, or who the last point of contact was for that property, we can get the people, the parties and interests served even quicker. And a lot of times for these properties, that's the, the stalling factor. Who owns this? Where are they? How do we get them the court notices that they need, so the court can take action? I mean, that's a frequent problem, because that's the, the very beginning of these processes. And if you don't, if you can't show that you've notified everyone who could have an interest in it, the court's going to delay us 45 days, 65 days, 85 days to get everyone notified. So, this will be helpful to that. But it's also keeping the heat on vacant property owners to, to turn them over and to get them back on the market. So, it's, it's another approach to that same problem. But yes, we do pursue receivership, and we do have several cases open right now. Yep. Councillor Mursul?
I have one more thing that sounds like a loophole, and that's the active, active building permit. And I'm going to give you a hypothetical situation, and I hope I don't hurt anyone's feelings or get anyone all upset. But if there was a part of the Sylvania Building on the corner of Boston and Bridge Street, a property that's had an active permit for several years, right? Right? I mean, I would think that it's an active...
It has an active permit. It doesn't have an active building permit. Right now, they're doing some drainage alterations.
So, it's an active building permit?
No, that's a drainage alteration through engineering.
So, so the difference is that this says an active building permit?
I'm not understanding the question.
So, this ordinance changed just...
Oh. The definition of a vacant building?
I didn't have that in front of me.
So, abandoned means any property that is vacant, occupied for more than 45 days of a real property.
So, just to say it out loud, the, the new language says vacant means any real property that is not legally occupied and is not the subject of an active building permit.
So, if someone has an active builder permit, I would think it's not abandoned, or that's someone that were, that's complying or working with us if we issued a building permit.
So, you don't think that there's a situation where it could be drawn out for a couple of years, and then...
So, a building permit is only active for 180 days. The only way it could keep going if they're doing work, it could be two years, but they're doing something slowly, you know, they don't have funds. But they're doing the active work, the construction slowly.
Okay, so this is interesting. I didn't know that, that it's 180 days for a building permit, and that's it. And then you can get it extended as working?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I'm good then.
No other questions or comments? We want to go through these red lines. Many of you, if not all of you, have not had a chance to see these red lines in advance. James, if you want to take us through, I know some of this is just capitalization and some minor changes. If you want to take a section by section, and if councillors have a question or a concern, raise your hand.
Sure. So, in Section 12-66, we added the word vacant to help describe, this is the purpose and introduction, to help describe what the properties are that are targeted by this. We struck through real properties and foreclosure. A few lines down, I capitalized director and the department name, Inspection Services, and the board name, Board of Health.
And some of these, you can go high-level overview, it's okay, as long as you feel it's not material on some of these.
I capitalized director and department names in the definition section. That's in Section 12-67. I deleted the definition of foreclosure process from that section since it's no longer applicable. I added the definition for vacant, which means any real property that is not legally occupied and is not the subject of an active building permit.
I just want to pause on that real quick. Does anyone have any concerns with the definition of vacant that we have in here? Seeing none, continue.
Okay, thank you. In Section 12-68, this is the registration process. So, we struck the foreclosure process trigger of it, and I added some capitalization. I changed the annual registration fee rubric and added the ability to charge as a municipal lien, unpaid registration fees. That helps require foreclosing mortgage holders who are actual owners. Once the property is no longer occupied and no longer being held by the people that lived there, the mortgage bank would still be on the hook for our registration fees. There's a maintenance requirement, and failure to maintain the property could result in a fine. Failure to respond to the city's communication could result in a fine. Those are required to help us coordinate with, with these property managers. Oftentimes, we'll send them a letter, we'll send them a ticket, and nothing gets done. So, if they're keeping us up to date on who it is we're supposed to contact, those who are acting in good faith will make the necessary adjustments, and no fines are necessary. And that's the, really, the best outcome. That's the outcome we all want. I added a...
Councillor Mursul?
Where are the fines defined for the, for that particular?
I'm sorry?
The maintenance fines, where are those defined? Like, if they, if they don't put up a visible sign for who, who to call?
So, in Section 12-71, Enforcement and Penalties, in the third paragraph, failure to maintain the property is required in Section 12-69 shall be considered a violation of this article and is punishable by a fine of up to $300. Each day that such violation continues shall be considered a separate offense.
What does up to $300 mean? Like, is it $300, or is it a sliding scale? Like, what would the fine?
It should be set at $300, yeah. So, should be punished by a fine of, should say, up to, yeah.
Of what?
So, if we, if we strike the word up to, that'd be helpful.
Anybody have any issues with getting rid of the word up to? The words up to? Seeing none? We'll just...
So, continuing on to Section 12-72 adds some specificity to the appeal process. The appeal goes to the municipal hearing officer, that's an administrative hearing, that the result of that hearing can be appealed to any court of competent jurisdiction, which would be probably District Court or Housing Court. And I think that's it.
Hey, Councillor Harvey?
Thank you, Chair, not being a member of the committee. Quick question. In, let's just say we, they come across a property that does have people squatting in the property, and the city, does the city take action to remove those people, or do they put the onus on the owner of the property? And if the city does, because it is an illegal situation, is the owner of the property, after they've been notified, are they held liable for any costs, additional costs, the cost to the city to have those people removed?
So, that's a complicated question. Squatters are people who the police can't remove from the property for some reason, but are not, they don't have permission from the owner to be there. So, maybe their lease ran out, but they're continuing to live there. That's considered a civil matter, and the landlord or the owner of the property would have to bring those people to, to court to evict them, and they have to go through... have to bring those people to court to evict them, and they have to go through the eviction process. The city doesn't generally get involved in that unless there's some reason to, like a health, serious health code violation or a serious building code situation, and there are statutes that empower our inspectors to address those issues.
So that being said, obviously, if the city has to repeat going back to this particular property, should the owner of the property be held liable for our time? For instance, the building inspector, the health agent, even the police department, if they, if they're notified that they have squatters in their property and there's a nuisance of just any police activity having to go there, or even the fire department having to go there, could the owner actually be held accountable for what it's costing the city to repeatedly have to go back to that property knowing that they had squatters in there?
What's there in violation?
So it wouldn't, they wouldn't be, there's nothing in this ordinance that would address that, Sarah. And I don't know of an ordinance that we have on the books that would address that.
The only time I could think of, if we're going there for violations, specifically a rundown property, maintenance, and then we can start giving them tickets for that, and Board of Health would, I'm sure, have their own tickets. They might want one.
Counsel, in the instance you're describing, ultimately, it's the property owner's responsibility. So if there's a property owner involved, they're going to be responsible to rectify whatever the situation is. As James said, I don't believe the city has ever been involved in a squatter issue in an eviction process, at least not in my 18 years with the city that I can remember. But we have held property owners responsible for their property, no matter who causes the issue. You know, we've had instances where people have dropped trash or debris in front of somebody's house, but how do we know where that came from? It's the property owner's ultimate responsibility. How they handle that in the future, you know, if they want to go after that squatter, that's up to them. As James said, it becomes a civil matter.
Okay, I understand that. I guess my question would be, is there a way to put something in ordinance that holds them liable, not just for the fines that they're getting, but for added costs that it costs the city, I guess, is what it comes down to.
So I'm aware of an ordinance in another state that does that. I know that down at Rhode Island, in and around the University of Rhode Island, I know that they have multiple calls in a certain period of time, probably for the undergraduate population that lives there. So it'd be interesting to explore, and I'm happy to do that.
I think one other thing just to mention, the city does have a nuisance house or a, you may be able to think of it better than I can, Counsel, problem properties. No, it's not a problem properties. It's a, it's something the police have. It's an ordinance that the police can enforce, a nuisance house or a nuisance property, where they can take them to criminal court over that problem.
Counsel Rosnewski.
Yeah, David's right. What happens is the typical nuisance property would have been a college house, where there's always parties at the college house that sits in a neighborhood, and the people that live there have been cited or arrested or whatever, but the conduct continues, and we've gone after the landlords of the property and find them as, and it was, it's a nuisance property is exactly what it is, and find them on a daily basis until they, landlords finally do something. They usually wind up serving them an eviction notice, and that basically stops the fines from coming because now they've taken them civilly to make an eviction. The problem isn't, and you're going to agree with me, James, it isn't, when you know who the property owner is, you usually get to work with them and kind of coerce them into doing the right thing. The biggest problem is when you don't know who the owner is, when all of a sudden the owner is non-existent, and there are people living there and they're a nuisance there. They're squatters. You find out that the owner of the property has moved out, you don't know where they've gone, what they're doing, what their status is, and now you've got, you can't serve them, you can't civilly go after them. You have to go through this long, drawn-out process of taking the property over after so many notices. So it's, the fines are going to help, but they're not going to answer the problem. The task force, when it gets together and they decide to, whether it's police, fire, health department, everybody decides to focus on one particular piece of property and go after that piece of property in a organized manner, that usually something gets done. But I think, I think the problem property off Bridge Street, that was two or three years where there were squatters in there until finally a judge made a decision that the owner can't be located, they have no idea where it is, it's been abandoned for two or three years, and they finally turned the property over to the city and it wound up being sold and made into a pretty nice-looking house now.
If I may as well, the fees that are currently charged go into an account, I'm sure you're well aware of the abandoned problem properties account. Sometimes we use those funds to take immediate action on a property. We serve them notice, make them aware that this is going to happen, we give them a timeframe to come into compliance, and if they don't, then we use those funds to rectify the situation immediately to abate a nuisance in a property. These fees that are being proposed, I think, would greatly increase that level of compliance on our part as a city to address some of those issues. We then place a lien on the property to get those funds back because that's a lot quicker process than it is to go through a receivership or to track down an owner, or especially if it's an abandoned property or an unregistered property, a bank-owned, foreclosed property. So I, these funds are going to be, in my opinion, key to us doing a number of different things that we can do to help limit the blight in the neighborhood, so.
Just checking in on the committee, any other concerns or questions? We have red lines in front of us with only one minor change, the removal of the word up to. Counsel Morcello.
Sorry, I didn't get to go through all this stuff that you provided, Vula, but do you know off the top of your head how many properties there are in Salem that are bank-owned and abandoned?
Not all bank-owned, but I have a list of foreclosed and abandoned, so the list is combined.
I mean, is it like 10 or?
Abandoned, probably about 10, I'd say.
Thank you.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to make a motion that we move this with a positive recommendation amended by the red lines and striking up to in Section 12-72 under the fine section, failure to maintain.
Yep. All right, Counsel Cohen moves to send this to the Council with a positive recommendation as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Morcello. All those in favor? Amanda Carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all three of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would have ideally taken public comment then. Is there any public comment here in the room for foreclosed properties or for ADUs?
Well, I haven't planned on foreclosed properties, but yeah.
If you'd like to speak on foreclosed properties, go ahead. Meant to do that right before the vote.
I wondered, Justin Whittier, Ten River Street, just very quickly. Counsel Morcello brought up a question, which I thought might be useful just for some background, the question of the churches that were, went unused. People may remember the MRA rod, which subsequently became the Municipal Religious Reuse Special Permit. The purpose of that was that there was no zoning pathway forward for these properties because of where they were in neighborhoods and whatnot. That's why they sat empty as long as they were. That might be useful for people to remember. And in terms of, is there only residential and commercial? Well, no, there's exempt uses. Churches are an example of that. You can find that. So you might want to consider in your ordinance here that you make provision for exempt uses like churches because they're not going to be covered by residential or commercial. But otherwise, everything I heard sounded good. I just wanted to add that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Anybody else who'd like to give public comment in the room here? Anybody on Zoom, want to raise your hand if you'd like to give public comment? Seeing none, I do see Lindsay has signed on. Okay, we'll move on to ADUs. Amanda Chincola, if you want to, thank you, thank you guys. So as a reminder on ADUs, this went before the council two, three weeks ago and received a first passage. There were some outstanding questions, and I believe Counsel Harvey's had a chance to sync up with Amanda offline and to get those questions answered here in committee. I also asked Amanda to just, for the public, to break, break this down, to break this down between, in two buckets here. So the big bucket that we have is what is required by the state, and then the second bucket is that we're here, we're here right now adopting these regulations, and there's some minor ones here that are, that are put forward by the city to amend the ordinance. So I wanted to just make sure we think about those in two separate buckets. Amanda.
Thank you. Again, my name's Amanda Chincola with the City of Salem's Planning Department. Would you like me to bring the red lines up there or just talk through them?
If you want to bring them up, it'd be good for people, if there's anybody watching at home right now to see them.
Could you just promote me as a panelist? So there are going to be three edits that you'll see in front of you tonight. The first one is, we talked about this at the joint public hearing, and it came back with a recommendation, the planning board, to amend the B1 from a no to a yes, and this is in that first category of the state requirements. In the, this document here, which is the regulation, this, this is the guidelines from HLC regarding ADUs and how we, and how they interpret and how they regulate the legislation. And in here, it says that a single-family zoning district is defined as any zoning district that allows single-family homes. And in the B1 zoning district, it allows single-family homes. So this was an error having the N on there, so we recommend having the change in that to a Y, which wouldn't allow it by right.
I'll just note for the council, this was voted upon in the previous meeting already.
Okay. So then I'll go down to the next two edits. These are not state requirements. These are based on conversations that I've had with Counselor Harvey, who I really appreciate taking the time to speak with me. In our prior ordinance, it required utilities to be served on a, on a combined service, on a single service, and in part, that was for affordability purposes, but because it, there was a requirement for owner occupancy. In this ordinance, we're not allowed to require owner occupancy. That's right in the state's legislation. It's very clear we can't do that. And when you can't have owner occupancy, there becomes a conflict with electrical code and concerns around sewer and water when you have common ownership on those utilities. So we've removed the requirement for the utilities to be together. Counsel Harvey and I had talked about including this section or this condition item that says detach accessory dwelling units that are not owner occupied, because there could be some that are owner occupied, but when they are not owner occupied, shall provide water, sewer, and electric utilities on a separate service than the principal dwelling unit. This is already required in any of the electric utilities by electric code, but it doesn't hurt to have it in the ordinance because it just makes it very clear for someone before they even get to the point of applying for a building permit or an electric permit, this is going to be a requirement. So it's really for transparency to let people know. I talked to Vula about this. She was very comfortable with it. I also talked to the city engineer. They're more than happy to have the water and sewer on a separate service when it is not owner occupied because they also had concerns around having that be shared utilities. So I'll pause there. I hope I described that correctly, and I hope Counsel Harvey, if you want to add to that, be helpful.
Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, Chair, not being a member of the committee. Yeah, you did. It basically goes back to if you're in an R2 zone or you have a two-family house and it's non-owner occupied, you are required by code to have what they call a house panel. Each unit gets its own electric bill, but the house panel is basically a bill that goes to the landlord to cover any common area, lighting, fire alarm, smoke detection, stuff like that. And that's why I brought this to Amanda's attention in regards to a separate ADU from the common building. If by chance the person that, and it's non-owner occupied, the person in the front building didn't pay their bill, now the electricity gets shut off, well, now the ADU shut off, more so for fire protection and life safety, and that was part of the reason why I brought this to her attention. And you explained it very well. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll go on, there's one more edit where, well, that we included in here. The intention of allowing more than one ADU on a lot from staff's perspective and why we proposed that in the ordinance was really for equity. So when you have a two-family home, when you allow one of those units to have an ADU, we just want it to be fair that the other unit has the opportunity to apply for one as well. And so that's why we included the special permit option to allow for additional ADUs. This is a concern that Harvey, Counselor Harvey, had brought up because in the R1 zoning district, you know, it's mainly single-family homes, and so he's concerned about having more than one ADU on a lot. I struggle with this a little bit, but I always appreciate the conversation, and I think this is a discussion that the committee should have, and so I included the language in here for you to consider. Most often in the R1, you'll have single-family homes, but there are situations with non-conforming lots, and you might have a two-family or a three-family. And so this language would exclude those non-conforming lots that have twos and threes from being able to add an ADU, more than one ADU. You get one protected use ADU, but it would preclude if there is a duplex in a single, in an R1 zoning district from having two ADUs. So again, that's for, I appreciate the conversation and wanted to put that out there for the committee.
Okay. I'll get to Counsel Cohen in just one second. So that would mean that we often think of witchcraftites when we think of single-family zones, but that also includes places like Chestnut Street and I believe the Willows is R1, is that right, Cindy? Not Counsel Jerslow. So it does include some areas that you may not think of as always single-family. So just want to open that up for discussion. Counsel Cohen.
I'm somewhat confused by this. A good part of Ward 5 is R3, and yet there's several non-conforming, you know, five families, six families, you know, 12 families, believe it or not, a 20-family in the R3. And, but this is only excluding the, this ability if it's an R1 zone. So every, every other non-conforming would still be eligible to have multiple ADUs. Is that right?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel Davis.
Thank you, Chair Happworth, not being a member of the committee. Through you, Amanda, I was curious if there was reasoning behind having this be a special permit process and not just having that be by right that each principal dwelling unit could have a ADU?
Yeah, we, we talked about that a lot with our, with the city attorney, and the regulations that came out from HLC have, it talks about second ADUs and says every lot that has a single-family district gets into the protected ADU by right, and that's protected. If a community wants to allow more than one ADU, it shall do so by special permit. And so because it has that shall, it's the state requirements that dictate that it has to be a special permit process.
If there are no other questions or concerns about the red lines here, Counsel Morcello.
I do. I, I'm still struggling with this, with this exclusion in the- I do, I, I'm still struggling with this, with this exclusion in the R1 zone, just if we're, if it's an equity issue in every other zone, not sure why it's not an equity issue in the R1 zone, and that's what I'm struggling with. I also don't think that there's many opportunities to put this to the test either. I'm, I'm trying to think of, even on, along Chestnut Street, I can think of maybe one, maybe two buildings. Yeah, I'm just struggling with why it's not an equity issue in the R1 zone, and if we're really, I, I'm not sure why, but I'm, I'm open for more conversation.
Councillor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Happworth. I'm also struggling with just kind of understanding, sorry that we're making you repeat yourself a few times here. And I agree about the equity statement, and I also, I'll just say, R1 seems to have the most space, to have the most ADUs, so that's where I'm really struggling. But, so essentially, this would be, say, a lot, I think Chestnut Street's a great example, because it could be a single parcel that might have three condos on there. Because there are one, only one of those could have an ADU with this language. Correct. I definitely disagree with that. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councillor Harvey.
I'm just, part of the reason why I brought this up is, I've gotten a lot of calls from my constituents in regards to an R1 zone with a ADU by right, and then another ADU by special permit. You're basically taking an R1 zone and you're turning it into an R3 zone. And the reasoning behind me bringing this up is because the state is saying it doesn't have to be owner occupied. So an investor can come into an R1 zone, and buy a single-family house, and add two ADUs to it, and with the way it's written, previous, before this, these changes, and basically walk away and rent it out, and as long as he's collected his three rents from that piece of property, doesn't have to, you know, not saying all of them do it, not saying all investors are that way, but, you know, they don't maintain the property. Now, I went out and spent $700,000 on a house in an R1 zone, because I didn't want to live downtown, or where there's multiple family homes, or multi-family homes. So you're basically taking what I purchased, or anybody, for that matter, that decided to live in an R1 zone, in a neighborhood where your kids can run around without it being multi-family, and without the owner occupancy, you're turning it into exactly that, a multi-family neighborhood, that the landlord doesn't have to maintain. Once they collect their rents, they don't maintain the property, and you bring down the value of other people's properties down, because of situations like that. And like I said, I'm not saying they all do that, or they're all like that, but it does happen. And this is part of the reason why, you know, if you have an, an R1, or the ADU in an R1 zone, to me is, if somebody that wants to age in place, or maybe an elderly couple that wants to turn their basement into an ADU to supplement, the fact that when they purchased the house, you know, right now their taxes are higher than what they purchased the house for, and their mortgage back in the day, so it helps that out. But to turn it into an R2 or an R3 zone by allowing it not to be owner occupied, and having two ADUs on that one piece of property, just doesn't make sense.
Amanda, could you walk us through, I'll get some more questions in just one minute, could you walk us through how somebody, a situation where, let's say we have a single-family house in Witchcraft Heights, can you walk us through a situation where that single-family house becomes, has multiple ADUs? How would that, how would that play out? I'm not sure that I, I'm not sure that I'm, I'm following how this would happen in a single-family zone with a single-family house.
Yeah, so if there's a single-family home, each principal dwelling is allowed to have one accessory dwelling unit. So if it's a single-family home, there can only be one accessory dwelling unit. If there was a two-family in this single-family zoning district, if there was a two-family in an R1, then depending on what you vote on for this ordinance, you could allow it by special permit or not allow it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jerzlo, and then councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I have some concerns about this. The first is, I actually emailed you about that exemption. Has anybody with an ADU actually used that tax exemption and saving?
Yeah, I, I thought I responded, there are eight, sorry about that. This is the tax exemption that the city offers. There were eight properties last year that received the tax exemption, and the total dollar amount was about $3,800 total.
Can I jump in here real quick? I didn't clarify the, the course of events here. If we could keep it to the, the red line first, and then we'll move on to the general, because I think there probably are some general questions and concerns like that, that we can move to. Okay, thanks. Any other, any other questions around specifically the red line? Councillor Cohen.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I have a problem with this exclusion for the following reasons, and respectfully to councillor Harvey, I see this as not adding units, this is only for a property that has multiple, as it says, principal dwelling units on the property. Okay? So this means that it would already have to have the principal dwelling units. This is not enabling someone to add a principal dwelling unit. So it could be that, like I have a small amount of R1, and it could be that if there happened to be a two-family, you know, non-conforming, they could have two ADUs. I'm fine with that. This is not enabling a single-family to add another principal dwelling unit, it's only enabling any property that has multiple principal dwelling units to add ADUs for them. So I'm actually, want this to go back to the original wording. Thank you.
Councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Chair. Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, if I have a single-family dwelling in an R1 zone, and I have an ADU by right, and I turn my basement into an ADU, is that person that has that single-family dwelling, able by this, going by these, allowed to get a special permit to put a detached ADU above their garage at that point?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Marsal.
I will say, I think the wording is a little bit confusing, and I had to read it a couple times, and maybe that's where it's coming from. It's the, the five are fewer, one is fewer, and so it does, it does sound like you can add another one through a special permit, if you have a single, a single family. So maybe we could just tighten up that language between two and five, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just to be, just so we're all clear on this, this is just for reasons of equity, saying that, imagine a three-family property, in this case, we don't say that the first one who applies for it is the only one who ever gets to have an ADU, we're saying that each of them, if they met the requirements, could apply for an ADU. So in the case of a single-family home, you have a single-family home with a single-family primary occupant who can have one ADU, but that could never be a second ADU, because within a single-family zone, there would be no opportunity to go from one family to two family. Am I understanding that correctly, Amanda?
I'm sorry, I was working on my.
Okay, it's okay. So I was saying that this, in this case, it's just for reasons of equity, so we're saying that anything, five units or above on a, on a single parcel, each of those owners could apply for a permit, but there would be no opportunity for a single-family property owner to take and apply for multiple ADUs on their single family.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you. Do you want to take a vote on this, this amendment now? Any other comments? Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to move that Q says there shall only be one accessory dwelling unit by right on a lot. A lot with two to five dwelling units may have one accessory dwelling unit per principal dwelling unit by special permit per Section 9.4 with a maximum height of 18 feet for tax accessory dwelling units.
So councillor Cohen's language was to, to say a lot with two to five dwelling units, and then to remove the red line, and then to say may have one accessory dwelling unit per principal dwelling unit. Seconded by, yeah, for further clarity, okay, so the, if you're reading along on Q there, it would say, there shall be one accessory dwelling unit by right on a lot, a lot with two to five dwelling units, and then you remove that red line, and then it goes, may have one accessory dwelling unit per principal dwelling unit by special permit. Amanda, does that seem well-worded?
Yes, I'm just sharing my screen, so you can see it. There, there shall be one, only one accessory dwelling unit by right on a lot, a lot with, and I will write this correctly, two to five principal dwelling units may have one accessory dwelling unit per, per principal dwelling unit by special permit per Section 9.4 with the maximum height. Looks worded great to me.
Any questions on this? Councillor Jerzlo, you good?
So you're taking out excluding lots in the R1 zone?
Yeah, actually, you look right up, right up there, Q, so, right where her cursor is, there, there you go.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, it's taking out excluding lots in the R1 zoning district. Yeah, I was going to take just, just this one amendment right now, and then we'll take the others later, this one's the only one that seems to be controversial. Do you feel comfortable with what's being voted on, everybody?
I beg your pardon, but.
It's not time for public comment right now, Justin.
Before you vote.
We're not voting on, just for clarity, we're not voting on the entire ordinance right now, these are just amendments.
Before you vote. It would be useful.
Are you, are you comfortable with these, councillor Jerzlo? Okay. So all in favor for councillor Cohen's amendment? For, this is just for Q, as stated up on, up on the screen up there. All in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Okay, we'll move on to the rest of the, actually, the other amendment, because we've already voted on E accessory uses moving for the B1. So this would be councillor Harvey's suggested change on Section 4D. Any questions or concerns there? Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Happworth. I'm going to defer to councillor Code Harvey, and move that we accept this as written.
Agreed. And councillor Harvey, thank you for your hard work on that. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Okay, general questions on, general questions and concerns on the ADU ordinance? Councillor Jerzlo.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question on that tax exempt. So what, what stops a developer from coming in if it doesn't have to be owner occupied to rent out all the units and not use this tax exempt? All the ADUs in Salem are used in this tax exempt? Or is it, it's better for them, easier for them just to have the high rents? How are you, what is the percentage?
So in 2025, this year, there were eight properties, eight ADUs, that received the tax exemption, and we had 14 certificate of occupancies between 2022 and 2025, so that's about 57%. And we'll keep in mind that properties that received a grant for the, to build the ADU were not eligible for the tax exemption. And then there were some accessory living area units that I clump into our total of ADUs, that did not apply for the tax exemption. So again, there are eight, 57%, that received it this year, in terms of the look forward and ahead. If a developer wants to purchase a property and, and charge market rents for the ADU, they can do that, or they can request a tax exemption and cap the rents at 70%. It's an option for homeowner, a developer, whoever has the ADU.
So, just so I can understand this, be patient with me, so we're trying to make affordability here. So like the condo conversion, you're, you know, you're putting it on the homeowners, the people that own two and three families, with all these fees to make it, you know, so developers can't come in, but you're actually giving developers a huge, to be able to buy these properties, a single family, and add a couple ADUs in the backyard, and charge these exorbitant rents. So how does that prevent not having an owner occupied property, where you can have, are you following me, I'm probably not making sense? So you, you have this single family, and it's, it doesn't have to be owner occupied now. So you could have a developer come in and build the ADUs and charge exorbitant rents, without the owner occupied and these rent restrictions that you're taking out of this ADU. So how are you making affordability? You keep talking about affordability and all this whole thing, it's going to be good for the city and the residents, but you're actually taking away those protections about affordability. Can you explain or walk me through that?
Yeah, yeah, so we need all sorts of housing, I just want to start with that. We need affordable housing that's deed restricted, we need affordable housing that's naturally occurring, we need market rate housing too, there is a need for all types of housing. Accessory dwelling units are small units, they don't have the same amenities that a large apartment building with a pool and a mailroom and a gym have, and so they tend to have lower rents. Sure, a brand-new accessory dwelling unit, it's not going to be the lowest rent on the market, but it's a small, could be a 900 square foot unit in the basement, so they just tend to have lower rents. A homeowner also has the same opportunity, an owner occupied property has the same opportunity to charge either market rent or get the tax exemption. So whether it's an investor or an owner occupied unit, it's, the choice is up to them, but regardless, the city, I see this as a win, because we need the housing, we need, we need different types of housing.
And it goes back to councillor, thank you for that, councillor Harvey, about not having an owner occupied property, you know, absentee landlord, there's, there's a lot of problems in different neighborhoods, especially down the Point area with absentee landlords, a lot of problems. So I don't like taking the, the owner occupancy and the rent restrictions, and also the parking requirements out of there. What, what's the background of the parking requirements taking that out?
So the current ordinance does not require any parking for accessory dwelling units, this was carrying that forward.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Happworth, to you, to councillor Jerzlo. So this does not allow someone who has a single family on a lot to add multiple accessory dwelling units. If there's multiple primary dwelling units, so if it's an R1, but there happens to be a three-family, three condos, they could literally add three accessory dwelling units. So I do agree that, you know, some people are going to probably charge more, you know, right now Salem is a place everyone wants to live, and can probably get higher rents, but one of the things that came up a couple of years ago, when we were doing the housing roadmap, is that we have this inverted formula in Salem, where the need is for smaller units, like single-family, I mean, single, you know, one-bedrooms, we have more of a need for smaller units, and we have more availability for larger units. So I think in some ways, even though we can't guarantee what people are going to charge for rent or mandate it, these are kind of, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, these are sort of naturally affordable, you know, based on the size.
Councillor Marsal.
Thank you, Chair. Just, this is actually a real-world example, when we had the restriction of owner occupied only, it created some issues for a developer who was building. for a developer who was building single family homes right on Highland Avenue, who wanted to build ADUs into it while he was building the house. And that is the cheapest way in my mind to build an ADU. While you're building the house, you build in the ADU on the first floor. But he couldn't finish the, the job because he wasn't allowed. And so, you know, that, that's, it's a real world example of somebody who's trying to do the right thing, trying to make it more affordable for a family to buy a single family home in Salem because they would have this immediate rental income. And, you know, they, at that time, they couldn't finish the job. And so it became the homeowner's responsibility to finish it out and get the, get the occupancy permit and all of that. So I just want to point that out. I think that there's plenty of room here. At the same time, there's not a, there's not a thousand homeowners who are building ADUs either. And so I will take, I will take any wins here. I think, I think it's great as we're building single family homes to build in an ADU. It makes so much sense in this market right now. Thank you.
We've been talking about ADUs since many of us have been on the council. Just for the people at home, Amanda, very briefly, could you, could you just sort of, I know we talked owner occupancy, we have talked to death a couple of times on this council. And just for the folks at home, can you talk about where, what brought this specific iteration of the owner occupancy conversation about?
Sure. So the state recently passed new, new legislation referred to as the Affordable Homes Act. And in that legislation, the state specifically says that communities are required to allow accessory dwelling units as of right, which means it can't go to a land use board, it needs to just be a building permit and as of right process. And communities cannot require owner occupancy. There's also definitions around what an ADU is, but they refer to them as protected use accessory dwelling units as of right, no owner occupancy requirement, which is why it was removed from here.
Can you talk about the, the questions around single family, single family zoning districts that have come up around this?
Sure. And the, and the legislation, it says, a single family zoning districts are, are required to allow protected use ADUs. And there are a lot of questions on what is a single family zoning district? And the legislator charged is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to come up with guidelines on how communities, you know, interpret and implement that. And so they did come up with these, you know, these standards here. And in that, it says that a single family, defines a single family residential zoning district as any zoning district where single family residential dwellings are permitted for an allowable use, including any zoning district where a single family residential dwellings are allowed as of right or by special permit.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make a note, and I'll go to Counselor Harvey and Counselor Jurslow right after this. I just want to make a note that, you know, this, this owner occupancy conversation was one that was a big part of the original conversation in 2020 or 2021, whenever we first started talking about this. And then it came back before us again, maybe a year or two later. And I personally was a no vote when it came back before us because it had been such a big part of the conversation the first time around. But this is, I think we're in a different situation here where we are, we are looking at something that's being implemented statewide, which I think this is a, this is a blessing for us. We don't, we shouldn't be the only community in the area looking at the housing crisis the way that we are. It should be everybody, and it should be a shared burden. So Counselor Harvey and then Counselor Jurslow.
Thank you, Chair. Not being a member of the committee. Going to what Counselor Musillo was saying as far as, obviously, the whole owner occupied thing, I don't want to beat a dead horse here. We know it's going to, it's going to go through. But there are ways around the construction process when it comes to the real estate aspect of it. And it's, doesn't even take in play right now, but you, they can build the house with the ADU, but in the sale of the property, if by chance it ever did come about where the, had to be owner occupied, you would put that right in the sale of the house as part of a disclosure saying, because it has an ADU, that it has to be, you know, and when you purchase it, you understand that it has to be owner occupied because it does have an ADU already in it. We just separated a little bit, but again, we're just beating a dead horse because this is state required right now.
Counselor Jurslow.
Thank you, Chair. Amanda, I know that you're saying it's state mandated, but isn't there a thing called municipal interest? That if a city has municipal interest, they should not be overlooked? Like the parking requirements, owner occupancy, open space? Speak to that?
Sure. The, the regulations are very clear and the legislation itself states the accessory dwelling units cannot be owner occupied. That is just stated in there. So there's no waiver around that.
But if it's a municipal interest, doesn't the state, can't they not overlook that? If it's a municipal interest within the city, within the residents, they cannot overlook that, the state cannot overlook that?
Again, I'm just reading the legislation. It was very, very clear that you cannot require owner occupancy. I don't know what case the city could make to say there's municipal interest that city, that Salem has that's unique, that the other communities do not have that would allow something like that.
Maybe this solicitor can clarify that?
Yeah, the legislation, it is very clear that owner occupancy is not allowed.
Any other question, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Hathworth, not being a member of the committee. I always love going down the ADU memory path. I was a vote in favor of not having the owner occupancy restrictions the first time. And the second time this was in front of us, I thought it was a unneeded restriction. I think the, the language that we're using about renters versus owners is definitely not needed and not something that should be part of this conversation. And I think that a developer built most of Salem. We, they're, they're not big bad things and it's, it's okay for a developer to buy a property and add an ADU to it, in my opinion, and not have that be owner occupied. We need rental units. We need units in the city for people to live in. As Counselor Cohen mentioned, the housing roadmap study that was done a few years ago really highlighted the, the desperate need that we have for all different types of housing units, but especially those smaller ones. I, I don't know what it says that people want to live by themselves now, which is an interesting turn, but we just don't have a lot of those housing units. And this is, I think, an easy way to add those while still preserving the character of our, of our neighborhoods. So I was in favor of removing the owner occupancy restriction two, three years ago, and I'm definitely still in favor of it now.
Any other questions or comments before we move to public comment? Seeing none, we'll take public comment. We'll do the comment first in the room, and I see there's at least one hand raised in Zoom. We'll go there right after.
Hey there. Lucky you. That's just me, I guess. Wow, there's a lot. Well, so tonight's, excuse me, Justin Woody, Ten Rivers Street. Tonight's discussion really illustrates the problem here. The amendment that we saw tonight was dealing specifically with single family zoning districts, looking to make a change in there, right? So I guess that means that we all understand what a single family zoning district is, right? So when the state law, what was passed by the state legislature, said that it applied only to single family zoning districts, I think we know what that means. I think we know that what I've been telling you all this time is exactly right. That it applies only there. And if the EO HLC decides to redefine single family zoning district as meaning everywhere, that everybody knows that's not true. And some people are like, oh, it's above my pay grade. No, it's not. You know as well as I do. It's, it's obvious. That's, it means what it means and it's entirely obvious. But I'm not going to dwell on that because I don't think I'm going to persuade enough people on here. But so I, I want to talk about something that I think that most people here care about, they pretend to care about, which is affordability. Now, so one of the reasons when this was passed, people like me supported it was that, look, neighborhoods are giving up something, but the community is getting something in return. We're getting affordable dwelling units. This is something that makes a difference. We're giving that up now. We're just getting rid of that. We're throwing it out. Why are we doing that? Now, the state law, you may not believe me that this only applies to single family zoning districts. Okay. But, you know, if you read the regulations that the EO HLC promulgated, and I will just say that the law says they may promulgate regulations, which is different from shall. And I'll note that because anybody who knows the law will recognize the difference between the two of them and the degree of power which they connote. But the EO HLC specifically says that cities and towns can have reasonable regulations. And those reasonable regulations can protect legitimate municipal interests. That's something that was brought up earlier tonight. A legitimate municipal interest, I suggest to you, is affordable housing. Is protecting affordable housing. And so, and let me just delineate that in case anybody needs the language behind it. Creating affordable housing, which is priced at a level which fosters community at all income levels, which enhances the ability of workers to live within Salem borders, Salem's borders, which allows homeowners to earn needed income while providing housing to those otherwise priced out of Salem's in-demand market, helping and incentivizing those who need income most and not for those for whom profit is uppermost. Now, I think that's a legitimate municipal interest. I think you all would agree with me on that. The EO HLC that creates these regulations has said, that's something that you can regulate, that you can put into this law, that you can protect. And maybe I've missed it, but in all the discussions I've heard, I haven't heard anybody say, hey, can we actually still protect affordability in ADUs? Or do we just have to throw it out? The mayor has said it's unreasonable in what he sent to us. He says it's unreasonable. Well, I wish, I really wish that you all would say, prove that to us. Prove it to our satisfaction. Has anybody here said that? I don't think so. ADUs are not naturally affordable. Comparable sized rentals in Salem go for 2,000 and 3,000. I heard, I heard 900 square feet mentioned earlier. I looked it up on Zillow. Three grand is a typical 900 square foot apartment here. Does that sound affordable to you? It doesn't sound affordable to me. Developers and landlords are going to go with what the market will bear. And so this, the tax exemption that's in there, I mean, come on. Who's going to go for that? If somebody can get a better deal, if somebody can get more money, they're going to go for that. So please don't pretend that that fig leaf is actually protecting affordability. I'm not going to go on, but if you're, I really encourage you to read 760 CMR 71 to see if what I'm saying is actually true. There's a three-pronged test for what is not a legitimate interest. It has to completely nullify the ADLU law. Would that do that? Wouldn't affordability? Of course it wouldn't. Would it impose excessive costs on use or development? No, of course it wouldn't. Would it substantially diminish the creation of ADUs without advancing the municipal interest? No, it wouldn't. That's just one element of what we're losing. And I think that's important to all of you. And I think if you examine that and convince yourselves that yes, we can keep that, maybe you'll have your mind open to some other things that we can keep. But even if you don't and you decide to keep that, Salem will be better for it. People need affordable housing. I know you all know that because you all say it. Well, stand up for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. John in Zoomland. I'm sorry. John, you go, and then we'll go Lydia, Lydia after there.
Hello, actually, this is Carol Carr.
John, can you, sorry, hang on, John.
Yep.
John.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Carol Carr and I'm speaking for myself and my husband. We live at Seven Rivers Street and we have been owners of the house for, oh, 52 years. And we have seen this city go from a lot of, lot of bad properties to lots and lots of improvements. And I'm just going to focus on the ADUs. And I, I am so, I just don't understand. I'm, I'm listening to Counselor Harvey and I totally agree with what he talks about, about zoning and zoning being a protection. That to have ADUs, non-owner occupied is deeply disturbing to me. Make no mistake about it. Developers are not in it to be nice. They are in it to make money. If they can't make money, they won't do it. So don't let them, don't make it easy for them to come in and change the character of this city by having more non-owner occupied places. It is not good for the city. And about the municipal interest that the other counselor had brought up, why can't we use that and say, we are a unique city? Our city depends on tourism. We have to be concerned about traffic and parking and congestion. And if we continue to allow multiple residences to be built on lots without providing the affordable housing, I don't understand what we've gained. I feel like Salem is giving away the store. We are such a wonderful, wonderful city. The other thing is we can't solve all of the housing problems. And that we, we have, Salem has done a tremendous amount of, but a lot of effort into making more housing. I, I, I mean, case in point here is what I call Bertiniville on Canal Street. I'm astounded by the, that complex. It is humongous. That's got to solve some problems. The ones over by the Moose Family Lodge, that has to solve some problems. There's going to be housing over at St. Crittian's. That's got to help with the affordable. How much can you do? And again, the ADU is supposed to be so that it makes somebody who lives in the city for a long time and they'd love to stay, but they can't. So maybe if they do an ADU, they can afford to stay. I really think you should go with caution on this. I, I don't, don't give up the uniqueness of Salem. We're not like a lot of other communities. And other communities should be doing their fair share. I certainly think Salem is doing its fair share. So, and I've written a letter to all the city councilors. And one of my things is, are you creating an investor's dream and a neighborhood's nightmare? Are you really creating affordable housing when absentee developers own the property? They have no stake in the community and rent the property at market rate? What is our mission here? What are we trying to do? I, I, I think you've got to go really slowly and not, not give in so quickly about the non-owner occupied ADU thing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Hi, my name is Lydia King. I live at Four Forest Avenue. I support all of the changes that are currently on the table to this ADU ordinance. I think that affordable housing is incredibly important. And if you look at case studies from across the United States, you can't solve affordable housing by just building units that are called affordable. You also just have to allow production. It's just like supply and demand economics. We have people who want to live here and we need to have a wide variety of units for them. So I think this is the right move for that. And insofar as the things that, that the state is requiring, I would just remind people that we have the 49th least transparent state house in the country. So if you have issues with the state, I happen to agree with a lot of what the state's doing, but in this case, but there's a lot of other areas where the state does things that people disagree with, and I would encourage you to get involved in the movement for more transparency in the state house if you feel very strongly about that. And then finally, I just want to add that just like in regard to the, the ability to, to build. to, to build a non-owner occupied, like I think that Patty brought up a really great example, sorry, Counselor Marzola, of someone who wanted to build a property and build the ADU in as they were building and they couldn't because it was owner occupied. And I think about, I come from a large Irish Catholic family and I have multiple family members who I fully know I will be responsible for like their housing and care as they get older. And the, they do not have the disposable income to like buy a property in Salem. The only place they could buy a property is probably like New Hampshire. So it's on me to either figure out my future life where I drive up to New Hampshire and I'm taking care of these people in their elderly years, which were the same years that I have young children and don't want to leave. Or I can work to, you know, buy a property that is closer to me, maybe in Salem where I live, and build an ADU and have like, you know, two units there. And I can't do that. I can't buy that property without occupying that property. And I already live in a property right now. Right? So there's like perfectly, and that's just like an example, but there's lots of perfectly valid reasons why people who are not developers would need that type of exemption. And to be honest, I think there's lots of local developers who also are not out there to ruin the neighborhood, right? Who want to work with the neighborhoods. But just a lot of thoughts on that. I support this and appreciate all of your work on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we move into motions? Seeing none? Anyone have a motion for this? Counselor Marzola.
I move to refer this back to the full council as amended with positive recommendation for approval. Second passage.
Counselor Marzola moves to recommend the full council as amended for second passage, seconded by Counselor Cohen. Any others discussion on this before we move to vote? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Any motions? Counselor Cohen.
Yes, sir. I move that we adjourn.
Counselor Cohen moves for adjournment. All those in favor? You're adjourned. Thank you, Amanda.